One minor change. We are going to remove item fifteen, the introduction of the mobile food truck ordinance, from tonight, but I don't have comments.
Second.
Motion, and a second, to adopt the agenda, removing item fifteen.
We had a discussion.
Go ahead and have discussion.
Okay, so there are some things that we need to tweak in that ordinance, so before we introduce it, we're gonna tweak that, but you can still, we can still do food truck licenses, so it's just working with our city clerk, so I wanted to make sure that people weren't afraid that we were gonna not have food trucks, we are eventually gonna have food trucks, but we're just not gonna introduce it tonight, so there's still a way to do it, though.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Agenda is adopted, and our first item this evening is to present proclamation to the Minnesota Women of Today Founder's Day. The Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today have set aside July first to recognize the many activities of dedicated Women of Today across the state, and we are going to, so we are, let's see, we're gonna declare July first Minnesota Women of Today Founder's Day, and if there are people here for this, perfect, I'll meet you up front. That's like you're Steve running out of the back with a microphone. Thank you.
I looked out and I heard the door go. Hi there. Why not? Why don't you kind of stand here, peek around, make sure you're on the monitor, and yep, you're good. Well, good evening, but I came down here with the wrong note. Could you hand me the, that one, yeah. Unless I'm going to read you tonight's agenda.
All right. Whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today have set aside July first to recognize the many community activities of dedicated Women of Today across the state, and whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today is an organization of over 1,000 members in over 60 communities, and whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today are dedicated to actively promoting such public awareness and service programs as Can Do Canines, Breaking Free, True Friends Camp Friendship, and the March of Dimes, as well as projects, educational programs, and fundraisers for the Coon Rapids area, and whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today provide personal enrichment and leadership training for members of all ages, and, one more whereas, whereas, the Women of Today believe that through us, great lessons can be learned, worthy deeds performed, and a hand of fellowship extended to millions of women everywhere, and now therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim July first, 2017, to be Minnesota Women of Today Founder's Day in the City of Coon Rapids, proclaimed this 20th day of June, 2017. So maybe you could introduce yourselves and tell us maybe what you're gonna do that day, or what you've been up to, or just kind of give us a quick synopsis.
Well, I'm Melanie Chinworth, I'm the current president of our chapter, and we are actually going to hold an event at the Crooked Lake Library, a little children's coloring event for Founder's Day.
Brenda Kenley, I'm a member.
Sherri Boyk, I am the current treasurer, and we have done a lot of things with Breaking Free lately.
Excellent, excellent. And your organization's just over a year old, is that what I remember right? Okay, well, excellent, well, thank you very much, and...
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June sixth meeting.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Johnson, any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the one abstention, so the motion passes with one abstention, Councilmember Kicker. Item, next we're onto our consent agenda. Our first item on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution seventeen dash sixty-eight, accepting Community Strength Foundation donation in the amount of $6,250, and Community Strength Foundation has graciously donated $6,250 to offset costs for the 2017 Summer Concert Series, $500 of which came specifically from a recent donation from Border State Bank. The donations will offset costs for the following performers, Ecuador Monta, Hitchfield, which I think those are both behind us now, right? And then Castaways, Polka Beats, Zingrays, Backyard Band, Lachlan Road, and Church of Cash. Council has asked, oh, we are, so we are adopting a resolution formally accepting this donation, and the city is grateful to the Border State Bank and the Community Strength Foundation for the generosity, generosity, so this will be adopting Resolution seventeen dash sixty-eight, accepting the donation of $6,250 from the Community Strength Foundation. Next on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution seventeen dash sixty-three, declaring participation with the council on local results and innovations state performance measurement program. Cities that choose to participate in the program in 2017 are eligible for reimbursement of 14 cents per capita from the state, which in this case is approximately $8,600. We're all set to participate, the city must file a report with the state auditor by July first, 2017, and those look like they're all ready to go, so we'll just be adopting Resolution seventeen dash sixty-three, declaring the city's participation with the council on local results and innovations performance measures program for 2017. Number five, it's a city clerk thing. The City General Records Retention Schedule establishes retention periods for city records based on administrative, fiscal, legal, and historical value. The Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers Association has provided a recently approved update, and the council is asked to adopt the May 2017 General Records Retention Schedule, and in case of true confessions, I did not read all 122 pages of it, so I'm hoping it's okay.
It's okay.
Okay, good. Next will be to adopt Resolution seventeen dash sixty-seven, accepting the donation for our first responder Narcan program. Narcan, is that how to say that, chief?
Say Narcan, it's easier.
Well, but they say the brand, and then they say Narcan in parentheses. The fire department is participating in a first responder Narcan program through the Metropolitan Emergency Services Board and Metro Region EMS system. This program is part of programming through the Minnesota Department of Health that reimburses fire departments for the purchase of Narcan for use in opiate overdose treatment. To date, this program has reimbursed the city $431.70, and Resolution seventeen dash sixty-seven will formally authorize acceptance of the donation, so this will be moving Resolution seventeen dash sixty-seven, accepting the grant monies for the first responder Narcan program. And, item seven is to accept or adopt Resolution seventeen dash seventy-one, appointing Zachary Juntinen, and I apologize if I don't have that right, to the Safety Commission. And the last item on our consent agenda is to approve a memorandum of understanding between Inoka County Fire Protection Council and the City of Coon Rapids, and the memorandum of understanding with Inoka County Fire Protection Council will allow a city firefighter to teach at the Inoka County Fire Training Academy at their pay rate, and the city can be reimbursed at $50 per hour, and this will cover the city employees while they train at the county fire academy. So that is the complete consent agenda, unless I missed something.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Grischowiak. Any questions or discussion? Other than how to pronounce that thing?
Narcan.
Yeah, Narcan. All right, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. Next item is to consider, planning case seventeen dash four, to consider adoption of ordinance twenty-one eighty-nine, increasing the maximum square footage for an accessory structure in the LDR districts. Let me find it here. All right, okay, oh, sorry. Yeah, normally I would read it, but I forgot to highlight it, I got it now. All right, so we are being asked to approve ordinance twenty-one eighty-nine, increasing the maximum square footage allowed for accessory structures in the LDR districts to 2,000 square feet of lots, one acre and greater in size, and the maximum would include both detached and attached accessory structures. The proposed ordinance also includes a reorganization of the section to make it easier to interpret and administer, and, there was a little bit more to it, so the proposed changes are, let's just go to the proposed, so currently, you could have up to 1,200 on LDR lots less than an acre, and this would move it to 1,600 square feet of detached or attached, providing it does not exceed 80% of the finished floor area of the house, and on acres of one acre or greater, it would also take that up to 2,000 of attached or detached, as long as it doesn't exceed 80% of the finished floor area of the house, and then on LDR two lots less than an acre, currently it's 1,200 square feet, and this would move it up to 1,600 square feet of detached or attached, and on LDR two of lots of one acre or more, it would also be 2,000 of attached or detached. This has been through the planning commission, and we introduced it at the last council meeting, so we're looking to move something. Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion in planning case seventeen dash four, to approve ordinance twenty-one eighty-nine, to allow 2,000 square feet of attached-detached garage storage space on residential lots of one acre or larger, and 1,600 square feet of attached-detached garage storage on lots smaller than one acre in our LDR one and LDR two zoning districts.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker, discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
So I kind of raised this at the introduction of this, and I want to say just at the outset, I'm supportive of a change that allows people in Coon Rapids, especially like those that have been asking for this change, to basically build a bigger outbuilding, bigger garage. I don't think, you know, when you look at an ordinance and you want to amend it, that you should overlook having the opportunity to make some other constructive improvements to an ordinance as well, and so I'm hopeful that we can have a discussion ongoing in the future on this, because as I started to review this and the way it was written, it became very clear to me there are some inequities in the way that this ordinance could be applied to similarly situated people in Coon Rapids, so I'm hopeful that the council might express an interest in doing that, and if so, I can certainly support the change here, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. We used to, if you can look at the proposed ordinance twenty-one eighty-nine, and some of the lined-out language, we used to attach, let me not use that word because of, we're dealing with garages here, we used to give some import to, or importance to, it being 80% of the finished floor area of the principal structure for any attached garage or storage space. So you can kind of see the logic behind that, so you don't want the garage to be, you know, bigger than the house, but when we separate it out now, and it's attached or detached, all of a sudden you could have similarly situated people on similar lots with slightly different finished floor space, but one can build a much bigger garage and the other one can't, so let me give you an example. A thousand-square-foot walkout Rambler with an unfinished basement, so you got 1,000 square feet, on .75 of an acre, so it's not over an acre, that person can build an 800-square-foot garage, okay, or have a total of 800 square feet of garage and other storage, whether it's attached or detached, doesn't matter. Next-door neighbor, say a similar lot of .75 of an acre, has a slab-on-grade two-story that's 1,000-square-foot footprint, but it's a two-story, so there's 2,000 square foot, that person can build a 1,600-square-foot garage and storage space. Two neighbors, same footprint of the house building, and one can build double the size of the garage or storage than the other person. I frankly think that's fundamentally unfair. I like that we're expanding the opportunity for people to add a bigger garage, because what I see in my neighborhood, which is full of Ramblers and four-level splits like my house is, people with a boat, or an ice house, or an RV, and they need a place to put it, and they've got the space to put it there, and I fully encourage people to do that, and as people have expanding lifestyles, you know, I want people to invest in their properties. I want them to be able to buy a boat and keep their house in Coon Rapids rather than moving out someplace else, and have a garage to put it in so that it doesn't get full of hail, or something like that, like that could ever happen, right? So I, I'm gonna support this, but I hope we can have an ongoing discussion about how we can make this more fair for neighbors, because I don't want to get into a situation where all of a sudden it's really coming down to how much finished square feet you have, and whether there needs to be a further inspection to determine whether or not you can build a garage that your neighbor has when you have very similar houses. That's my point, thank you.
Councilmember Temmer.
I agree with that sentiment, and maybe it's living in a Rambler neighborhood with very large yards and fairly small footprint houses, but yeah, I think this is solving a problem we have right now, where a couple people are trying to build something, but it opens up the fact that there are some kind of weird things in the code, and it would be great to go back and look at them, you know, maybe that's not the most urgent thing, but I have wandered around a little and seen some garages that I'd be very surprised if they comply to the code that got built for things like RV storage, and they don't look terrible, but I bet they don't meet the code.
Sure, it's the old ask permission, or ask forgiveness rather than permission.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Councilmember Johnson, I agree with your sentiment, I think that it's, it's just, they've always, it's always been done that way, and I think the attached language only got added when they made that modification to add up to 1,600 square feet, as long as it was attached, and, so I, no, I completely agree, I just think that it's, yeah, I think this is the right thing to do with this ordinance right now, but to come back and look at it another time, absolutely.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, for me, I'm, can understand where we're coming from, I'd like to, if we're gonna look at this at a future date, that we start looking at some different case studies, just to see, you know, are we trying to solve a problem that exists or doesn't exist? You know, are there actually homes in these situations, and would they be able to build that with the building setbacks and the lot coverage, because there's other factors that would come in, and, you know, are we gonna spend an awful lot of staff time solving a problem for one lot in the city, no lots in the city, 500 lots in the city? And so, you know, absolutely think it's something that we can go after and look at, but we need to look at some use cases of how big of an issue is this?
If I might just speak to that real briefly, one of the things I did to determine some familiarity with this is to try to find out, you know, what does the government think the square footage is of my house, and, you know, I'm mindful that, you know, I have assessments done, and I had real estate appraisals done, my house generally speaking is a four-level split, so you've got three finished levels, and then you have a basement laundry area, and it's a walkout on the third level that goes out, so, but when I asked for information from the city about what do you have my square footage as, it was like 1,200 and, I don't know, some change, and in fact, when they did the assessment of my house, it was bigger than that, because that third level was finished, and I remember buying the house, and of course, the mayor and I talked about this and joked about it a little bit, the realtor said it was like 2,100 square feet, so, but at any rate, you know, I think that there are a lot of lots that we have, because we have so many cul-de-sacs in Coon Rapids, and those lots are, they're irregular shaped, but they're bigger in back, and they have a lot of space in the back, and I know a lot of people have actually expressed to me that they would like the opportunity to build back there, but then they get into this issue of how big can you build and whatnot, so I appreciate that.
And after our conversation today, I spoke to our chief building official, Greg Brady, and asked him, I said, so what's the process? And he said, the site plan comes in, and he said, they go down to the assessing department and get the records from there, and if that agrees with the site plan, that's what they use.
But if it doesn't, and then the person says, but really I have more finished square foot than that, then we get into this wrangling about how much and what do we count, and then what are the consequences of that, which I don't know that we want to get into that much, but whatever.
And that's no different than what we have today.
Right, yes.
Because that exists today.
Councilmember Grischowiak.
Mayor, I'm certainly favorable to allowing a little more finished garage space in this. I also made a point in the last meeting that as long as we have the proper setbacks in place, we're not infringing on the neighbors, I think it all makes sense. I do agree with Councilmember Johnson in the fact that the criteria is a little different, and when you think about it, someone might put a higher value on finished garage space than they put unfinished basement space.
Right.
So I think if we can come back and look at this at some other point, I would be in favor of that as well.
Sounds good. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. I wanted to swing the gavel, you know, just to, just to let you know that it passed.
I could go out of order, could I?
Back in the peanut gallery, back there. All right, next item on our agenda, consider Resolution seventeen dash seventy, awarding the sale of $10 million in general obligation bonds, series 2017A. There you go, it's coming up. So do you want me to just kind of read these little highlights here, Ms. Legg?
Well, maybe, the amounts have changed, so maybe I'll just kind of update it just a little bit.
Okay.
We did get bids today, we got seven bidders on our bonds, the lowest rate for, it's like over 20 years, will be a net, or true interest rate of 2.22%, so those are 20-year bonds, so that's a very good rate. Wells Fargo was the low bidder, the amounts changed a little bit, because what they do when they price these bonds is they set an interest rate that maybe is a little bit higher than the market rate today, but then they pay down the bond, so they pay us premium, and because we're limited by the bank qualification for the 10 million, we have to lower the par amount of the bonds. So, but when you take into account that premium that's being paid, and the interest rates that we'll be paying, it comes down to that 2.2%. We did have a Moody's rating, again, they just updated it, as you remember, we just sold bonds, I think it was in November or so, but I'll just kind of mention the highlights from the Moody's report, it's always kind of interesting to see how they see our city, but we got our AA1 rating, again, which is the second best from the top, they cited that the city's mature residential tax base that benefits from its favorable location near the Twin Cities metro area, strong financial operations with ample liquidity, average debt levels, and moderate unfunded pension liabilities, because we're part of the state para pension cost. The strengths that they cited were our 45% fund balance policy, ample alternative liquidity, and then the location close to the Twin Cities. The credit challenges that they mentioned, there was a couple of them in here, it's a mature community with limited space for future development, and the enterprise funds pose a little bit of a risk, a competitive risk, and that's referring to the situation at the golf course with the restaurant. So we had a good report, good rates, this compared favorably with the sale that Ellers conducted yesterday for the city of St. Louis Park, he said it was very side-by-side, the rates were the same, except they're a AAA-rated city, so even though we're a little notch lower than them, we still got essentially the same rates. So, with that, we're doing our four different issues, we're doing our improvement bonds to fund the street improvement projects, associated with that are water main replacements, a portion of the park improvement bonds based on the referendum that was passed, and then we're refunding some golf bonds to save some money in the golf course fund. So, that's it.
Thank you. Do you want to move this forward, or?
Your Honor. I'll make a motion to authorize Resolution seventeen dash seventy, awarding the sale of 10 million general obligation bonds, series 2017A, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
Sir.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Item 11 is to consider a mutual aid agreement with Minnesota Water Agency Response Network, Min Warm. Mr. Hammer, you want to hit on the highlights of this, or you want me to read from your discussion points?
Your Honor, I'll be very brief, it's a mutual aid, emergency response program in the state of Minnesota, utilities helping utilities, it's mainly around the utility forum, no obligation to the city to respond, if we have personnel or equipment available that we can, we certainly will, there's no cost for us to participate, Mr. Brody reviewed the agreement, finds it acceptable, I will say Marty Glynn is here, he's kind of the metro president or metro area director, if you have any questions for Mr. Glynn, he's here as well, otherwise I can stand for questions.
Okay, Mr. Glynn, did you have something you wanted to share with us?
No, I was here to answer questions, sir.
Well, you were posturing, so I wasn't sure, but you were moving.
I was here to answer questions.
Okay, council? Questions, wishes, motion?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Wells.
I move we approve the Minnesota Water Agency Response Network mutual aid agreement and corresponding Resolution seventeen dash sixty-nine, and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Kicker, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. Your work is done.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. All right, item 12 is to consider design services agreements for the 2018 park improvements, project seventeen dash 12. Mr. Hammer.
Mr. Mayor, this is the next round of park bond improvements for 2018, we are looking to combine improvements to Crooked Lake Park and Riverwind Park, both of those have conducted open houses with the public, have gone through a few rounds of comments through Park and Rec, the boards were available at the last Summer in the City meeting, I also submitted those to you, they're also attached to this memo, that's the basis for the design, if there are certainly any questions or comments you have on those, I'd be interested in hearing them, whether it's tonight or sometime over the next week, otherwise that will be the basis for design, we'll start in on design immediately, and we would have final plans probably by the end of the year, and we'd be bidding in roughly January, February, and look to start constructing. end of the year, and we'd be bidding in roughly January, February, and look to start construction in the spring.
The one question I've got is from the Crooked Lake Owners Association. Will there be power in the gazebo's and will it be enough for their crock pots?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Councilmember Kicker.
Mr. Hammer, I do have a question too about, both of these designs have pickleball courts in them. Riverwind has six of them, and I believe the Crooked Lake will have kind of a divided or double use, the tennis court and then two pickleball courts. Are we making those large enough so that we don't have any impedance from a fence? I was talking to some people and that was a concern they had playing on a pickleball court that had just gone in in Andover, I believe, where the fence behind, you know, the serving line was so close that it was very difficult to serve. So, just in the design, you know, concerned about...
Councilmember Kicker, I will say that Riverwind is basically the pickleball place. That is pickleball designed, it's modeled after, you know, great courts in St. Cloud and whatever else. There was going to be a tennis court at Crooked Lake, and we just thought, why wouldn't we stripe it for multi-use?
Right.
So, it's a secondary use, we'll certainly look at that fence area, but the home for pickleball will be Riverwind, and there are opportunities on other tennis courts for us to look at multipurpose as well.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Demmer?
Let's see. This doesn't make it easy to find them, but to move. I would move that city council award design service agreements to WSB and Associates, Inc. in the amount of $87,941 for Crooked Lake Park and $16,801 for Riverwind Park as part of the 2018 park improvement projects, which is item 17-12.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Gaisler. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Wells?
I'd just like to, you know, say thank you to the staff and the Parks Commission. There's a lot of time that goes into it, a lot of hits and misses and stuff, so appreciate all the detailed work and really like the way this came out.
Mayor? Councilmember Griswold?
I agree. I think the concept plans look great for both parks, and I think it's going to be a great addition to our community. The question that I have is, just how do we select the design service company, WSB Associates?
Councilmember Griswold, they were the consultant that did our overall master plan back in 2012. They provided most of the concepts at the early stages. Last year, we utilized Kimley Horn, I think, on those projects. So we kind of look for proposals from each, and we look at what the lowest cost would be and the comfort level and familiarity with our projects.
Very good in reviewing their proposal. It does definitely look very complete, very good. I just was wondering. Thank you.
Councilmember Demmer?
Mr. Hammer, would you like to say anything about the park building at the Riverwind Center or anything along those lines, or would you like to just move on to the motion?
I respectfully decline, thank you.
So we did our best to accommodate several inputs from citizens on feelings of importance on that building, and it changed the budget a little bit, but it was deemed something important by a lot of people in that area. Is that a fair way to say it?
Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, counsel mentioned, I mean, that is still a bit of an open issue and how that gets funded.
The original budget for Riverwind didn't anticipate reconstructing or salvaging the building in some form, and so that's a future conversation we'll have to have with council about how exactly that portion gets funded, either that's through park dedication, fundraising or otherwise. But that's certainly something we're anticipating, the design of the park now, and then, you know, we can be flexible with where and how that building comes together in the future.
That's a good clarification. It's in the design. Yeah.
Thank you. I was going, ooh, I don't think so.
Yeah, didn't quite say that right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Next on our agenda is to consider accepting the 2016 annual financial statement. The city council held a work session way back on June 20th to review the 2016 annual financial statement with the city's external auditors, Malloy, Montague, Karnowski, and Rada Zavitch and Company. Once approved, an electronic copy of this statement will be made available on the city's website. And, yeah, it was the first several minutes, we're just accolades about how wonderful our finance department was and getting everything organized and so... Councilmember Demmer?
I move that the city council accept the 2016 annual financial statement, and just like to say, you know, government transparency is very important, and having an auditor come in and say that we're doing a very good job being transparent is just a great kudos to the staff.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Nobody else wants to pile on how wonderful they are? All right.
Come on, come on.
Come on, bring it on.
Cornerstone of modern civilization.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And we have accepted the 2016 annual financial statement, and that will be on the internet then for folks to review. All right. Item 14 is to consider introduction of ordinances for code revisions related to multi-unit waste and recycling collection. Colleen, do you want to do a presentation on this next time, or this time, or any time, or?
I wasn't, I didn't have anything planned for tonight, but I can answer questions.
Maybe, okay, all right. So, we are looking to amend city code sections 8-202, 8-215, others, requiring multi-unit residential buildings with centralized waste collection to provide a one-to-one ratio of mixed municipal solid waste to recyclable material containers and a minimum of a weekly collection schedule. This item was discussed at the May 19th, or May 9th city council work session as the second of a two-phase project. And this Phase II portion is proposed to require all multi-unit buildings with centralized trash recycling collection to provide at least a weekly recycling collection and a one-to-one ratio of trash recycling containers on the property. So if they have an eight-yard trash, they should have an eight-yard recycling, and the recycling needs to be picked up at least weekly. Yes, all right. This code modification will be monitored by city staff for both the site inspections and the haulers upon license renewal. Recycling staff will continue to work with each multi-unit, and if introduced, this proposed code amendment would be scheduled for adoption at the next city council meeting, which is July 5th, and become effective September 1st. This timeframe will allow additional information to be disseminated to the affected properties and have adequate time to come into appliance with new requirements. So are there any questions that anybody has right now? Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did hear from a couple of haulers with respect to this, and I just wanted to see if there could be some clarification in one of the definitions that describes the containers. It says the containers must be easily differentiable, such as having different colored lids or containers. I'm assuming that means different colored containers. But is it acceptable to staff that they maybe put a sticker on it or something like that? I don't want to get into a big discretionary battle between haulers and staff if a hauler says, "Look, we know which ones are the, you know, the recycle ones, and we know which ones are the mainstream waste ones," you know, because we've got stickers on them, is that going to be acceptable to you all?
Well, mayor and council members, that's one of the things that we were discussing today, actually. We have all but one hauler, I believe, who already has containers with different colored lids. I don't know, the discussion that we had is if you have a blue lid versus a red lid without a sticker on the side of it, are you going to be able to explain what is the lid color anyway? So I think we're open to discussion on that and interpretation of a combination, as long as there, if you can walk up to them and completely understand what goes in what container, I think we have some forgiveness with the lid color. We would prefer that we stick with different colors, but, you know, I think it's, a compromise can be made.
Okay. I just think it would be important to kind of know what the kind of policy is going to be that dovetails with the ordinance, so that haulers can do that, and if there's a sticker you all can work on that you're acceptable with. Because a lot of these haulers have lots and lots of containers and bins, and they buy them en masse, and maybe when they repurchase, they have the opportunity to get those, but they might not have them right away. So I know that was expressed as a concern to me.
Yeah, we do currently have the stickers in place, so we, all the haulers have the same stickers on the bins, we've provided those. Where it gets difficult is, you know, say you have an enclosure that has an eight-yard trash dumpster in it right now, what we have been doing is downsizing the trash to four yard and adding the four-yard recycling, but for them to fit in the enclosure, they're not face forward, they're sideways, and a lot of those are front-load containers. They don't have a lot of space on the side for those stickers, so it's a smaller sticker versus the front, which are much larger. And so that gets challenging. We do have one property I can think of, right now off the top of my head, that does have that, you know, we have stickers on the side of the dumpsters, but the trash and the recycling have the same exact look, same colored lid. And even though there are stickers on them, those who are sending their kids out to put the trash and recycling in the containers don't understand that, so...
Well, and that raises the other question, when the ordinance says these containers must be easily differentiable, such as having different colored lids or containers, differentiable to whom? The consumer or the hauler? Because the hauler has to know what to pick up and when to pick it up and what kind of a dump truck to put it in or a garbage truck to put it in. But I take it from what you're describing is your goal is that they're differentiable to consumers.
Well, the haulers know what their containers are when they pick them up, and we do have stickers on the sides of them. So, any waste hauler is going to come up to the site and know exactly what good containers are which. We're working a lot with property owners, the residents within the multi-units to, you know, understand what goes where. You know, part of that is, if you're going to send your kids out, you know, there's some property issues that they have to work out, but we've been working for two years on the education piece of it. You know, I'm sure we'll hit some bumps on the road, we anticipate that, but I don't think it's anything we can't work through.
Then the other thing that was raised with me was the whole issue of, you know, some of the end users or the consumers, if you will, may not have a one-to-one ratio of mainstream waste versus recyclable. And I know that's kind of the goal of the city, is to have more recyclable and less mainstream waste. But there are certain businesses out there that might not. Have you thought about whether there could be, instead of a weekly pickup, because some of them may not need that, whether, because I think the ordinance contemplates a weekly pickup of everything. And for the, you know, the large apartment complexes and the townhouse developments and things like, that kind of makes sense. But there may be some users that don't. How do you, I mean, is there room for flexibility within the ordinance if they want to do it once every other week?
Those are one of the things that we've talked about also, having some sort of an opt-out process. Code enforcement and staff internally were against it because it makes it really hard to monitor. We know that they'll be challenging buildings, you know, we've been working with them already, and, you know, we find different ways to get around things. In the end, everything that we've had in place is working, we haven't had any failures yet, and we've been working with a number of different types and styles of people who live in different buildings, different classes, and we've seen success. So we know what's out there, and we have geared up and planned to work one-on-one, if needed, to get the right fit for the right building. Some of the hesitancy will come down to property managers just being a little bit more enforceable on, you know, some of their practices within their building.
I get that, but this is an ordinance, and we're creating a law and a penalty that goes along with it. So, I mean, I'm, if it says one-to-one ratio and it's got to be picked up the same number of times per week, why shouldn't a consumer be able to say, "But you're picking up an empty can," or a can that's only a third full, and we would like to opt out of that because it's now costing us more? Can the ordinance be modified to create that option? And I, you know, I defer to council on this as well. I mean, if you're saying, "We're going to work with people," and you're saying, "We have an ordinance," I'm not sure that works in the final analysis.
Mr. Brody?
I think Councilmember Johnson makes a valid point, and we did have that discussion. I would note, this is affecting, and Mr. Hammer, Colleen could chime in, this is 54, you know, larger buildings with centralized collection, we're not talking smaller properties. So there's, I think, an assumption that the weekly minimum is sort of a minimum, that shouldn't be a problem. But again, I'd leave that to the experts that are out there on that part of it, but I think you do raise an issue that we did discuss, and it does limit the flexibility the way the ordinance is crafted this way, or potentially could limit. But it's my understanding that there's enough usage out there that that wasn't necessarily seen as a problem.
And I would agree. You know, we've, like I said, we've been testing it for two years in various places. The recycling, you know, right now, most apartment buildings are paying for way more trash than they're even using. So when you limit that number of trash dumps down and you increase the recycling, it just naturally evens itself out. You know, the opt-out portion, I mean, that's something that could, can be up for discussion. It's, code enforcement, you know, felt pretty strongly about how do we enforce something at a property when we've now decided they can opt out? What are we enforcing them to? It takes a lot of their, you know, tools away.
The thing I struggle with is that it can't be open to discussion if we, two weeks from now, pass this ordinance. So that discussion ends because we now have an ordinance that says exactly what it's supposed to be. And I think the only way, if I'm reading it right, the only way that somebody could say, "Well, we don't want to pick up the recycling as much," is to say, "We don't want to pick up the mainstream waste as much," because it's tied to the frequency with which you pick up the mainstream waste.
If I may. Please. If you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Are they not required today to have their trash picked up weekly? Businesses certainly are, won't they? Family, so the trash is already being collected weekly, it's the recycling that's not being collected weekly? So this is just putting that on par with that usage. So it's not going to change the amount of times they come and they pick up the trash.
Okay.
Yeah. And what we've seen with all of our site visits as well, you know, right now, the state statute says every resident has to have the opportunity to recycle. An apartment owner can put a small desk-sized cart on that property and pass that law. When we see, when we do site visits, you know, we see three carts, you know, 150 units, all those carts are filled up, they're not going to be picked up for two more weeks, I know everything goes in the trash.
Yep.
So at those properties, we made those changes to, it just naturally conformed and it's just worked out.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor? I'm Councilmember Griswold.
Mr. Sinclair, I realize that Coon Rapids is a leader in recycling.
I think we all want to see more recycling, it's a great thing, but we can't be the first community to go to one-to-one recycling at commercial buildings. Not only that, so, and the greater point is, we're going from containers, you know, one-to-one, that used to be two-to-one, and now we're going from pickup that used to be every two weeks to every week. So, I mean, is there some other cities that we could look at that have done similar? Is there any issue with this?
There isn't. We are truly, there's a couple other cities within the United States that are doing it. We are pushing on this because we've had a Green Corps member for two years, what the state has paid for, for us to kind of do this project. I can tell you that the pollution control agency is behind us, all the organizations are behind us. We've shared our ordinances to this point with many other cities. They're all waiting to see what we're doing here because they're ready to jump on board as well. It's been a struggle for years, and we can't make any headway with it. And we, I, it works, it truly does work. And, you know, with online ordering and shopping online, we see a huge influx of cardboard, those 96-gallon carts, it does not fit. We have had, you know, there's been talk or concern about the stream, is it clean enough? We've seen it. I mean, there's been, there's shifts happening that we truly believe that this is going to work, and we've committed our time and ourselves and our staff... to work and we've committed our time and ourselves and our staff for the past two years in moving forward to ensure that this is successful. And yes, we are a leader and I don't, I don't want to be hung up on that and say, we have to be the first one to do it. Of course, I love to be the first one to do things, but this is truly something that, I mean, we've been working towards for two years now. So for me, it's a natural next step and, you know, there are many who are waiting in the wings to jump on board.
Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Kristicovia, if I could add, you had mentioned commercial buildings. This isn't commercial buildings. Commercial buildings are already required to do this. So this puts multifamily buildings, residential, in line with what our businesses are already doing. So this is already required of our businesses. Is that not correct? One-to-one and weekly. So this is, I just look at a large facility like that and I know what my house would be like if I kept my trash out for two weeks and I can't imagine 40 or 50 or 60 units doing that. And again, it's not commercial, it's residential, and it puts them on par with what businesses are already required to do.
Good clarification. Thank you.
Ms. Sinclair, so I don't want to get distracted, but on the business one, we're looking at from businesses at minimum semi-weekly. What's the definition of semi-weekly? Does that mean more than, I'm just curious what that is?
You know, there's a lot of interpretations of the by semi.
But we're actually putting this into an ordinance though, so I'd kind of like to know what it means exactly.
That language is a technical language originally. It looks like it's new language, but that was the language that was there. I took it from Colleen, I assume it means the same thing it meant before.
But it looks like new language. I see it up there in that Struck language.
Just to clarify, we're not changing anything related to businesses. It's just the way we. Multifamily residential.
It's how the ordinance was, it made it easier to craft it this way.
Can you, Councilmember Johnson?
I think it's a great thing. I think being able to forward and encourage and strengthen the recycling position. I mean, I know at my house, I even asked my waste hauler, I have two recycling bins because if I just have one and it's a two-week pickup, it gets full because I don't have that much regular garbage. And to be able to look at that and how do we encourage that more sustainable behavior in our community? And, I mean, you guys have been working hard for the last couple of years, doing a lot of work trying to perfect this and getting to the right thing to do and working with the different buildings, so I'm supportive of it. I think it's the right thing for us to do.
Is there a way, if it starts on September 1st, is there a way to defer the punitive side of it?
That's why we're delaying the effective date of the ordinance to September 1. That was the intent, to give these multi-unit housing opportunity to come into compliance by September 1. I'm guessing we aren't going to be out there on September 1 with citations, but that's when the ordinance would actually become effective, so.
I mean, I'm actually.
So we give them a couple of months to kind of gear up for it.
Mr. Mayor, let me provide a little clarification as well on that. That gives us an opportunity to make contact with each of these property owners and provide them with the information. If someone were to call us up on August 15th and say, I understand your rules, I got to change the way I do business, I might not get it done till October 15th. Is that okay? Yes, we're going to work with them in that regard. We're not going to sit out there on September 1. This gives us an opportunity to touch base with each of them. If somebody just says, I'm not going to do it, I don't care what you say, that might be a different conversation to, I'm going to come into compliance, I just can't do it as quickly as you'd like me to.
Can I?
Councilmember Demmer?
So one thing I would just say is, this is an introduction and the nice thing about an introduction is it's new business. Two weeks from now, it'll be old business and we'll vote on it. And we've certainly had this as a discussion item a few times. It's appeared on agendas a few times. And the information I had heard at a work session was haulers were generally in favor of it because it applies to everyone uniformly and as people start changing the uniformity, then everyone wants to go to the lowest level. So I guess what I would encourage is if someone's out there that doesn't like it or does like it, that in this two-week period, that you contact city council members because I haven't heard people up in arms against it. Now again, if one person's up in arms against it and eight are in favor, that's not going to stop me. But, you know, we're kind of going on this, we're not voting on it today, we're introducing it today.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that if, that people understand that the introduction process allows those comments to come in in the next couple of weeks. From what I've heard, it sounds like people are okay with it because it raises the bar for everyone. It doesn't cause any non-competitive and quite frankly, the number of cardboard boxes out there, they don't really want in the garbage anyway. So it did sound like it's, you know, maybe not exactly a win-win, but at least a win-neutral and that nobody's screaming that it's a big loss. Now, I might be wrong and I might get a flood of emails, but I would encourage people to use the two-week period if they have large concerns.
Well, you've only got 54 buildings in this multi-unit, so it's going to be somewhat limited in response, but.
Sure. And I haven't heard from any of the property owners on it. I do have some experience with, you know, owning a property and having, you know, as a part of an association to pay for trash removal and having to increase the budget for that because so many cardboard boxes were put in the mainstream waste trash bin. So I think there are very good reasons for this. I just don't want it to impact the haulers in a way in which they have to lay out a significant capital investment that they then are forced to kind of pass on to those consumers. And so if, what I heard earlier is there are multiple ways they might be able to differentiate and if one of those is to use some approved stickers on existing things until they roll into different colored cans in the future, I can get behind that.
And I can let you know too, that we do have a plan in place, so when this does pass, we will have meetings with all of our waste haulers that we'll call and we'll, you know, we do have a plan to get aggressively everybody on the same page so we can work through and get all this set to go. So we'll have property management, you know, meetings, we'll have waste hauler meetings because we want to make sure everybody's understanding exactly what it is, we can work with everyone, so.
I'm sorry, I thought we already had those meetings.
Well, this would be to, not to, I guess, to get them to the next step. How can we, here's what we already have in place, here's the properties we have, how can we help you get to that next level? So yes, we already have had those meetings previously.
So all of our haulers are aware of what we're looking at tonight, the one-to-one and the.
I have had either phone conversations, email conversations with every waste hauler.
Yeah.
Yep.
Councilmember Decker?
Yeah, so to the point of the size of the multi-unit housing developments that we have, what's the smallest one that we have? How many units is in the smallest one?
I believe, and Steph can correct me if I'm wrong, six units and bigger are the only ones we're working with.
Okay.
That have centralized collection.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's the trigger, the centralized collection.
Centralized collection is the big, the big piece.
Okay.
Clarification from Google. By weekly can mean twice a week or every other week. Semi-weekly only means twice a week. So it is a clear term according to Google.
Semi-weekly.
Semi-weekly.
I agree.
Yep, so semi-weekly means twice a week. And if we wanted something else, this is your chance to change it, to actually say twice a week and just thought I'd mention it.
All right. Where would we be?
I know, isn't it a bit of bar fighting, otherwise?
All right, I had one other thing, but it's gone now.
Sorry.
Nope, that's fine. That's fine. Nope, not going to pull it in. All right, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I remember. Wish Cycling. Wish Cycling.
Yes.
That was a great article in the Star Tribune.
Yes.
And that's, to me, that's the bigger thing to address because everybody thinks they're using their recycling bins.
Correctly.
But they're not.
No.
You know, they're just throwing trash in there. And I can't tell you how many conversations I've had, not since this afternoon, but I mean, yeah, I need to recycle these. Those aren't recyclable.
Don't put your pizza boxes in your recycling.
Well, your frozen boxes or the crappy boxes from China with all the, that aren't real cardboard, you know? Yeah, I mean, so, I think there's a lot we still need to educate on, but.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So if there's no further questions, then we are going to consider, we're going to consider the ordinance for code revisions related to multi-unit waste recycling collection, which will amend city codes 8-202, 8-215-sub-2, and 12-914-sub-5. We will consider those introduced. And if you have anything on those, make sure you reach out to our councilor staff and let us know. And our last item on our agenda, well, actually, we're at open mic. Is anybody here to address council for open mic this evening? All right, well, great. Feel free to come forward. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council. On subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda, the public is invited to express any concerns they may have which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes and if you wish to participate, approach the podium, state your name and address before addressing the council. And, yeah, carry on.
All right. Mr. Mayor, city council members, my name is Christina Horton. I'm here representing Alloy Brewing Company and I'm here to announce and formally invite everyone to our long-awaited grand opening this Saturday, the 24th.
Oh.
So we will be opening at noon officially, so.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah, so we're excited. And I'm also a member of the community of Coon Rapids as well, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
We did notice one flaw in your schedule. You're not open Tuesday nights after council meetings.
It's like we're not.
Can we get a yet on that or?
We'll work on that.
Maybe it's the first and third Tuesdays you're open, but.
So yes, and I want to thank everyone with the city and council for all your support over the last year and a half, two years, and everything you've done and all the questions you've answered and kind of getting the ordinances where they need to be and getting us where we need to be and accepting us into the community, so we thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Well, we're thrilled.
Yes.
And the beer was very good.
Thank you.
Rumor head.
Yes, there was no rumors. That was firsthand information, Bill. Anybody else here to address council for open mic this evening? All right, well, and we did have an open mic report from the last meeting. Tina Carroll attended the city council meeting and expressed a drainage concern in her neighborhood. City staff is aware of the drainage concern and has met with Ms. Carroll on the matter. A neighborhood meeting will be conducted in the next few months to discuss the issue with her and her neighbors. At this meeting, the staff will present information on existing easements and the storm sewer system in the area and discuss options for potential corrective action due to current workload. However, this will take some time to accomplish. And because of the heavy rains this spring, there are several other areas of the city that have experienced similar issues. As stated at the council meeting on June 6th, it is staff's intent to meet with individual neighborhoods, to hear the specific issues, and better understand the extent of the concern. Following these meetings, site-specific options can be developed and brought forward to the city council for discussion on how they should be addressed. So thank you for dealing with that. And where are other business? Councilmember Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I want to express personally my gratitude to the Public Works Department. We had ridiculously severe hailstorm recently that devastated my neighborhood and my ward and a significant number of people were impacted in a significant way. There's a lot of storm damage to their houses and it was really comforting to see city staff out on a Sunday, really taking the initiative. And so I'd like to express that to you, Tim, so you can relay that to all of your people. I, you know, I also want to say thank you to the citizens of Coon Rapids because as I was out clearing about a half a dozen storm drains and knee-deep in very cold water, trying to get that slurry of ice and branches and leaves out of storm drains so the water could drain away out of these low areas, I was watching my neighbors do the same thing. And it was really comforting to see people out and helping their neighbors and helping the city. And I know it takes a while to clear some of that stuff and that there were certain neighborhoods that had leaves left on the street longer than they wanted. One thing that I learned that I didn't even know was that Public Works had taken so much initiative because the stuff was so unique, the leftover material was so unique, you couldn't vacuum it up off the streets. So we had to actually contract with three additional street sweepers that are the mechanical brush sweepers to work at clearing the streets. And it took a while to get around the city, but it was a lot of damage and I just think you guys did fantastic work. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, so I wanted to invite anyone on the staff who has further experience for this, but along with all the damage from the hail, certainly there have been a lot of people offering to fix my roof and I'm sure everyone else's roofs as well. And in my, you know, experience on this, many of them make a lot of statements that when you then go online, their statements prove to, at best, stretch the truth. So I just want to urge a lot of caution for people. You know, it's certainly something you want to get your roof fixed fairly quickly when there's damage, but you're hoping that roof's going to be there for a long time, so maybe the guy who drives up in the van, you know, you want to take a little extra caution as you review them. And I do know there are a few things the city does that helps not necessarily guarantee that they're going to be reputable, but maybe helps weed out the lowest bar and I would invite everyone on the city who has opinions on this to jump in and help our citizens understand any things they should do to protect themselves from sort of the scammy-er elements that are out there right now.
Scammy-er.
And made that work myself.
Councilmembers of the council, contractors come to your door and they have to have solicitor's license through the city's clerk's office, so residents should ask them to see that. They need to be wearing a badge which we issue. That ensures that we've at least background-checked them to make sure that they're worthy of being out in the community and they follow our process. If they don't have a license, call 911 to report it and someone will check it out.
And if they say that they've applied for a license, then what do you do?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Demmer, that is not a thing. They're not allowed in the community till I hand them a license.
Yeah, that was the one I heard and I thought, uh-huh. Anyway, you know, the other thing is that there are license numbers on, you know, if they give you a business card with a license number, don't sign anything until you look up their license. You can find their license information on the internet. But there's a lot of stuff, just be wary. You know, obviously, your best bet is to go to someone that you have a personal reference from. Anyway.
We have helpful information on the city's website with regard to how to screen your contractor.
Excellent. Thank you.
Does that also include like the tree? I've also had the tree people coming by to see if they need work done.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. The forestry page has city-approved tree trimming, tree contractors, so you should check that.
But would they also have a solicitor's license too then, or don't they need one of those? No, they don't need one of those.
Unless they're going to go door-to-door to solicit new business, but when people call them.
Oh, well, these are the ones that show up at my door.
Oh, well, then they should be calling me, yes.
Okay. I'm sure it's pending or applied.
Do you want me to bring my chainsaw over?
In a really long ladder. I haven't figured out how to get this one down. All right, so we have a, this is our last meeting of June and we won't have another one before the Fourth of July celebration. So before we start going into all of those things, any other business?
There's a meeting in the park between now and then.
There is?
So.
Oh, next Tuesday night, Woodcrest.
Yep.
Will the bathrooms be open?
Will the bathrooms be open? I'm sorry.
Woodcrest bathrooms will be open for the meeting in the park, right?
Are they not open now?
I, we're just giving you a hard time.
That'd be news to me. Yes, they will be open. So, yeah, bring your frisbee golf discs and come to the meeting at the park.
So it'll be 6:30 Tuesday night, June 27th, Woodcrest Park, 6:30. Okay, all right, cool. And then the Fourth of July celebration will actually kick off the morning, Sunday morning, July 2nd, with the 5K, 10K, and Fun Run and breakfast. And I've got the calendar here. And I've got the calendar here. Carnival Midway will open, let's see, sometime on, well, on, on Sunday. The concession stand will be open for breakfast at 8:00 AM. Bingo and Pull Tabs open at noon. Craft, the Craft Vendor Show is noon to dusk. The Car Show is 5:00 to 11:00. Gate fee $5. That's just for the people who want to bring the cars in, right? That's not for the people who want to watch it, okay. And then all proceeds from the folks that do pay to bring their car in and show it, those proceeds will go to the ACBC Food Shelf. Live Music, 6:00 to 10, the Cole Allen Band. Monday, July 3rd, again, Carnival Midway, breakfast at 8:00 AM. The Parade will be Monday at 6:00 PM. All of this is on the city's website or Community Strength Foundation, probably. Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation.com, including the parade route. That'll start and end at the ICE Center again at 6:00 PM, Monday, July 3rd. And there's live music that night from 7:30 to 11:00 by a band that probably could have used some help finding the name, Sushi Roll Band. I guess I shouldn't be critical, but I, it just seemed sushi roll band, 7:30 to 11:00. Tuesday, the 4th, the Carnival Midway, breakfast again at 8:00. And then live music from the Night Shift Band, 4:30 to 7:30. And then we've got Rocky Lynn, National Recording Artist. Rocky Lynn will be playing from 8:00 until 10:00. And that's a fabulous show that'll lead up to the fireworks at 10:00 PM. And, I don't know, that's everything I got here off the Community Strength Foundation's website. Anything else? Can we sell the beer over there, Councilmember Wells?
We could use some help selling beer if anybody wants to sell.
Chief Piper?
The city website, Stephanie Ring did an excellent job. It's on the main page, a lot of information. So either website can get the information for the three-day event.
Okay, excellent, excellent. All right, anything, any other business? Quick reminder, if you still have a pile of brush out at the street, you should pick it up and take it out to Tree Technology. Nobody will be picking it up unless you've made arrangements with your hauler. The city is not picking up brush this year. All right, so, Mr. Stemmott.
Mayor, council, I'll just mention, as many of you know, James Stanton passed away last weekend and certainly he played a large role in the development of the city, but also volunteered for a number of years on things like our Mortgage Assistance Foundation and in other areas. And there'll be a Celebration of Life Friday, June 23rd at 11:00 AM, New Hope Church in New Hope, Minnesota. So I just wanted to pass that along.
Visitation, I think, Thursday night, the same place, 4:00 to 8:00, I believe it